Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. I've been warned there's a 9:20 tipoff tonight. So we need to be back in front of our TVs by then. So, and I am rooting for the whole state of Michigan tonight, let it be clear. So, I'm wearing blue, no green and white. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufal.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Here.
Kristy Hilton.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Alright, we do have a quorum. We have an agenda of public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we enter into the public hearing at 7:03.
Support.
Okay, motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, this time I'd like to open up our second public hearing for the Colony Drive water assessment. For the replacing the water main on Colony Drive. Let's see. Just to recap, basically what the system is, we're gonna replace the water main along North Channel. We're putting new hydrants along, I guess we call them the canal. And the water line's gonna be connected at M-29. And also, it's gonna be a loop system, so we're going into the canal and tying in on Anchor Bay Drive. It's gonna give you increased water pressure. We have significant pressure from the DEQ to have this done. They cite lots of issues and possible issues with the existing water line as it is. And during the whole project, there's a Colony Waterline Fund. Right now, we're gonna use the balance that we have in that, it's gonna go towards the payment of this project. Estimated, and then once it's done, it will become a municipal water line. The Colony Association will be out of the water business. It will be a township water line from that point on. The estimate cost is $1,421,181... I don't know how they get the 86 cents, but that's the estimated cost. And as of 11/1 of 2017, the water fund, the Colony Water Fund, had $381,000 and some change in it. And that number's gonna go up, I think you'll have two more payments into that fund. And so, basically, the bond will be a little bit over a million dollars. If you come on up to protest the tax roll, we'll need your name and address for the record, because if you want to continue to protest it further with the tax tribunal, we'll need your record here that you were at the meeting. And like I said, the hearing is for you to state for or against the assessed assessment role. And let's see, and as I mentioned too, if you wanted to appeal further, you would do it through the Michigan Tax Tribunal Board. And also, if there is a process, if you wanted to get a deferment of the assessment, you can get a deferment if you qualify, and we have the information to do that also, if anyone would be interested. So, that being said, would anyone like to comment during the public hearing? No comments? Come on up, state your name and address, please.
My name is Vince Bojan, 7745 Colony Drive. And I guess, at this point, since it's clearly moving forward, my protest really here today is about how we're being assessed and charged. I myself have a double lot. I have structure from end to end on my lot. I'm tapped into the water line and the sewer line one time, that's all there will ever be. And the lots on the canal have two taps into these lines. And granted, I know they pay two water bills, they have two meters and all that, that's all great. But they're tapped into the line twice. I'm tapped into this line one time, I'm getting charged by the foot to replace this thing when you guys aren't even laying a shovel on my property. So I'm getting charged per foot to replace a water line that isn't even on my property. It seems, I mean, completely unfair to me. So I'm gonna be being charged twice as much as the people on the canal lot who are gonna tap into this line twice, when I'm only tapped in once. Getting charged per foot when there's nothing being replaced per foot. My property value isn't gonna go up twice as much as the guy with the single lot next to me. It's tragically unfair to me.
Okay, thank you. I do wanna mention too, that I know the last hearing, there was questions about who paid for the water line project in the 60s. And I believe, I haven't seen it, but I was told that they did have show where the whole association paid for the project in the 60s. And also, I can't remember the exact law, but how we assess it, we're kinda constrained on this by the state too, is how it's handled, so. Any other public comments? Okay, I was gonna say, I was gonna count, I was gonna count it down, one, two, three.
Really, well, you can do that after I get done.
Okay.
My name is Bill Wilbur. I'm at 8451 Colony Drive. And I'd just like to mention, it's always been brought up that the river people own two lots. Well, we do own two lots, but they're deeded together. We can't sell these lots. It's like, the road is dividing our property, is basically what it's doing. So, you know, where these people come up with it, we should be paying, you know, duck the assessment or double tap-ins, it's a total mute point. So, and this is the farthest, and thank you very much, Board, for taking care of this in a timely fashion. But, so anyway, other than that, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Any other public comments?
Just a question, what does a deferment of it mean?
I had a question about deferring it. The assessment's gonna be 20 years, divide up equally on your property tax. And there is a process, so if you wanted to defer it, I'm not sure how many years you can defer it.
The whole time.
The whole time?
They make the state pays us the whole thing, they go to lien against the property.
Okay. So if I follow this right, you can file for the deferment. The state would pay us, and they would put a lien on your house for that amount. So you wouldn't have to pay for it on property taxes, but if your house was sold or transferred or something, at that time, you'd have to pay for it. So, and if you're interested in that, you could see Barb or... So, that's how the deferment works. Okay, any other comments?
I have a question, is there a timeline associated when this kind of project will start?
I was asked if there is a timeline. If we do decide to go forward, we're gonna be putting it out for bids. Hopefully, in, I was told we could probably put it out for bids in May. And then, it's a matter of get, picking the contractor and when they can start. So. Okay, any other questions? For you folks that... What's that?
On the canal side or on the...
It's gonna run right where it is now.
Which is where? On the house side?
On the, yeah, channel side, house side. So.
Most of it in that, what's the length of the, the... The rest lines pull in the van?
Yeah, after, it'll be in the contract that, you know, they'll resaw their grass, that'll be part of the RFQ.
Are they gonna tunnel under the driveways? They're not gonna have to...
Is it tunneling?
Probably not.
Probably not. So.
You're gonna cut the driveways?
Excuse me?
You're gonna cut the driveways?
Cut the driveway?
Yeah. Yep, I haven't seen the granular plans myself.
Where will the fire hydrants go?
Right on top of the water line.
Right on top of the water line? How many hydrants per section then?
What is it, every 500 feet?
Yes.
Every 500 feet, there's a fire hydrant. No more public comments? Entertain a motion?
Yep. Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we now close the second public hearing regarding the Colony Waterline at 7:12 PM.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next, we have bills payable.
I will make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $32,511.77.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufal?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, do we have any public comments? Hearing none. Move right along to the consent agenda, we do have a tipoff. Entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda of the minutes.
Sorry, I missed my cue.
Of March the 19th, 2018, and the synopsis reports, check reports for February and March, assessing February water report, and at a glance Parks and Rec. And notice, there's one notice, acceptance of retirement systems annual report. Communication, 2018 taxable values before the Board of Review. Requests, none.
Support.
Okay, motion of support. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Alright, the highlight of the meeting, supervisor's report. Did go on our road tour last week with the county. Mark went with myself and Cindy. We pretty much drove the whole township. We do have a lot of, actually, not as many as I thought. We do have several cross culverts that need addressing.
Are they heaved?
Yeah, and, well, they're starting to collapse.
Okay.
And you can see in the road where there's some dips. And we kinda, I singled those out. And we have several ditching projects that are in need of. I wish we could do all the ditching projects in a year or two. But to be quite honest, we had, the Road Commission is still finishing this year the things that we wanted to do last year. We just don't have the manpower and the funds, for that matter. But I know they did not get it done, a big one on the island, Bar Harbor, which they just started this past week, they cut some trees down, and they're gonna be working on that going forward. But we do have, we did cite some on like Materd, Cogge Lane, Fruit Lane, and Field Road. And we are looking at repaving Lake Point between M-29 and Taff, right along our park, and a couple other small jobs. And we did receive, since I wrote this, we did receive quotes. I don't have the numbers in front of me, or the bids for St. John's Drive, and it came in to a little bit over $96,000. And it was a few thousand under what we estimated. And I believe our, the township share is after the matching grants that we received is about $45,000. So that's under, under...
Under budget.
Under budget. And that's estimated to be started May, June, yeah, wait for the asphalt plants to get up. I don't think we have to raise any man coverage there, didn't, we looked at it. We're gonna do about inch and a half of a payment on that road. We did meet with math over outstanding issues last week. I'm happy to say that we did make a lot of headway, and we actually agreed on a proposed contract. It'll be going to the Fire Department for ratification. I understand they're going to have a meeting to ratify it, or not, April 16th. And then, once that happens, it would come to our Board for approval. And so, yeah, we made a lot of headway, and it's very positive. And I have been mentioning in the past two meetings that, you know, we do have high water. And I reached out, we had, it's funny, the locks opened, the steel locks of the freighter's, and within the first morning, a freighter washed up all kinds of water and ice over on San Soucy and Harson's Island. I got about eight pictures taken, sent to me. So I actually used those pictures, and I sent an email out to all the players that we had in our high water meeting that we had last spring. Especially the Coast Guard, the freighter companies, and the Freight Great Lakes Carriers Association. And that very next day, they did send an email out to every freighter captain in the Great Lakes. And it seems ever since then, they've slowed down. So I told them, you know, we can do this voluntarily, like they did last year. And so, they're game players. And we are talking to the Marine Patrol about better signage. They're supposed to be giving us five large signs, and we're gonna put them up in different places. I haven't had any confirmation on that yet, to see where we are in that, in that process.
Is that a wake?
What's that?
Is that a wake sign? Is that a 200...
200, 600-foot wake rule.
Okay.
We want, you know, a lot of it's education.
Oh, yeah.
And signage. And we even asked them about if they would do some kind of promotional thing, like for seatbelts, they have the ticket or click it thing, and they'll just concentrate on one weekend in certain areas. Maybe if they could do some type of, of a marketing thing like that, and just really hit it like the first couple of weeks in spring. And where you just pull everybody over and verbally tell them what the rule is, and scare them a little bit, and if necessary, write a ticket or two. We do need better enforcement, no doubt. And I'm happy to say I did finish, I submitted the DNR Trust Fund grant for the purchase of property on Harson's Island for the Kayak Access Site. Lots of work, here it is, guys. Lots of work, but I'm pretty confident that I'm hopeful, let's say. And you wouldn't believe the letters of support I received from it, from just about everybody. Very widely supported. And we probably won't have a definitive answer till in the fall. They will contact me in May if there's any questions or anything that needs to be added to clarify everything, but it looks really good. And so, and we have, I've worked on actually a couple grants for the outdoor exercise equipment next door in the splash park. Our full-time resource officer for the Clay Police started in the schools last week, and I've gotten tons of positive feedback from both school and people in the public. I'm sure you have, Chief, on that also. And let's see, congratulations to Joanne Shirkey, our trustee. She won M. Parks, Parks and Recreation...
Volunteer something.
But yeah, voted her the Community Service Volunteer of the Year statewide. And she's gonna... That's right.
I'm very humbled, believe me.
And she's gonna get a, be presented award in Lansing in a few weeks. If anyone wants to go, let me know, I do have a signup sheet. So, we don't need to know right away, so, by April, yeah. Okay, anyhow. I do wanna report the, in fact, I think you brought it up, Chris, at one of our meetings, the St. John's Marsh Project.
Yep.
The, what the DNR did, and I've been working with Terry on this, what the DNR did, they instead of having one big project, they split up into two projects. And the first, and they're going ahead with the first part of the project. The holdup before is with permitting with the DEQ. And in fact, sadly to say, the DNR's actually taken the DEQ to court over it. But there is a section about $800,000 worth of work that was funded by the National Wildlife and Fisheries, federal money, and that didn't need a DEQ permit, so they're going ahead with it. It went out to public comments. They're gonna be doing a lot of dredging, build a temporary road out there to get the dredging material out. And so, I'm not sure when they're talking about actually doing the work. It's out for, the Corps has it out for public comment right now. My guess it would be in the fall or winter. But going forward with Phase 1, if you will, of that project.
That's all federal money?
Yeah.
There was no local matching?
No, and I asked them, because we committed $10,000.
Yep.
Towards it.
Yep, St. Clair Flats, everybody wanted a piece.
Yeah, I asked them if they need any part of that for this project. They said, no, it'll be Phase 2.
Okay.
So, just to let the Board know. But that looks like it's going forward. And also, on that, St. John's Marsh cleanup is scheduled for May 12th. May 12th, St. John's Marsh cleanup, they muster at 9:00 AM over at the DNR Access Site over by St. John's Marsh. And that's always fun, we have hot dogs for breakfast there, and we get along. Hey, John, do we have any men-at-work signs, like alongside the road? We could put maybe four, we have four? We can put them up, two on each side, 'cause they walk M-29 along that. And basically, pick up all the trash out of St. John's Marsh, and we could have the Fire Department, their airboat available, maybe with a few people to work on that also, it's always a good thing. Very good news, I received a letter today. We actually, big kudos to Chief Rose, and actually, Mr. DeBoyer had a part into it. The, our ISO fire rating for insurance is actually, the lower the number is better. And it went down from a six to a five. Been trying to do this for actually quite a while, never got it done, but Chief seemed to get it done. It went from a, well, it depends on where you live. It went from a six to a five. And how it works, if you're within five miles of the station or have a fire hydrant on your street, you are now a five. If you are more than five miles from a station and you have no fire hydrants, you went from a 10 to a nine. So we have a better ISO rating from this point forward. And I mentioned to, to this group, I called them up today to explain the letter that they sent me. It was like a algebra equation, you know, I had to have them explain it to me. And I told them that, you know, we got this project going on, on the Colony Driver, putting X amount of hydrants, and they said, well, once that's done, you know, let them know. But it's, shows contribute to our Fire Department and the Water Department. They take a lot of checks on the water pressure throughout the township, and supply is part of this ISO rating. So, good job, you guys. I did ask Chief Rose, I'll share it with the Board, for a letter of the State of the Fire Department, and basically kinda outline where we're at and where we have to put resources. And obviously, we know we do have to, to spend some time and resources going forward on our heavy equipment, our engines, and we need some engines on the boats. Also, rescue equipment, what I think is the most personal, we did make some headway, but personnel and safety equipment, and building maintenance and training needs some, needs some attention also. And once we get command staff in place, he's gonna, you know, delegate some of that to the command staff, and they got a lot to do, they're gonna be busy. So. One other thing, we received this today. Weather spotter training is from the Emergency Management, St. Clair County Emergency Management. If you wanna be a weather spotter, they have a class. It's April 23rd, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. It's an important hearing at the St. Clair County Administration Building. And they teach you how to identify storms, reporting, measure rain, hail, impacts of storms, all kinds of stuff. So if you wanna be official weather spotter, get ahold of Cindy, and she'll tell you about the meeting. So, and we have all kinds of things in our Parks and Recs coming up forward. I tell everyone, if you're on Facebook, like our Clay Township Parks and Rec, there's all kinds of programs going on there. And that's all I have. So, that concludes the supervisor's report. See, it's not that bad. Wealth of knowledge, just transferred. So.
Thank you, Artie.
You're welcome. Thank you, Joanne. Thanks for being the Volunteer of the Year.
I, as I say, I'm very appreciative of that.
Okay. Chief Rose, Fire Chief Report.
Good evening.
Chief.
For the month of March, it was not too busy of a month for me, for the Fire Department, but we did do some business. I attended one meeting, and that was the St. Clair County Chiefs Association. There was no topics, just general business was discussed. We had one ferry closing this last month. And we did assist the Police Department by transporting them across to the island for a call. And I spent two days in Lansing conducting Fire Department business. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your vacay. Okay, next, unfinished business. Continued discussion on our mission, vision, and goals. What say you, Board? Do you wanna continue without Chrissy?
No, let's wait for Christie.
You wanna wait?
I'd like to.
You'd like to wait?
I would. We waited for Mark.
We did wait for Mark.
With a full board.
Alright, well, next to me, let's try to do them all.
Yes.
Okay.
We really do our homework.
Yep.
Then we've gotta put a timer on ourselves?
On a couple people, Chris.
Fair enough.
I'm not mentioning any names, but that was a good idea, Chris.
No.
Which ones did we do last time? We went through three or four?
Three, we went through three.
Three.
That's a good discussion, I had a lot of positive feedback.
Well, we can just, we don't have a public hearing, and...
Right.
So, we'll just make sure the agenda isn't too overwhelming.
Alright.
Just focus more time on our unfinished business, that's all.
Sounds good. So I make a motion that we postpone the discussion on mission, vision, and goals.
Support.
Okay.
Tell when, tell next.
I have a motion of support, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose, motion carries. Okay, next, we have, under new business, approval of township donations.
Do we have to do these one at a time, or...
No, let's do them all together.
I will make a motion to approve township donations from Timberwood Home Builders in the amount of $1,000 for bike helmet sponsorship. Sign Monahan for $500... Sign Monahan for $500 park exercise equipment. Tom Soulier, $250 for park exercise equipment. And Phillips Lighting and Sign for $578.49 for muskrat crossing signs.
Do we have support?
Support.
I just want to mention what each one of these are for. Timberwood Builders donated $1,000 for our bike helmet sponsor. We are having a bike safety course. It's April 21st, is that 10 or 9?
10.
10. And what it is, we're inviting the whole public to come here. We have a bike, a guy with a bike shop that's gonna be here. He's gonna actually inspect everyone's bikes and tweak them out, adjust them if it needs small parts, he's putting on the parts for them, like brake pads or whatever. Then we have a safety video for, for whoever to watch, you know, it's geared for the kids. A little obstacle course, and the police are gonna be out there showing them what to do and what not to do. And they go through it all, actually every kid gets a free bike helmet. And Deerbrook Builders actually donated $1,000 towards the bike helmets. And Timberwood didn't allow out their competition to get ahead of them a little bit, so they also added up and gave us the $1,000, so big kudos to them. And that is what that donation is for. And it's gonna, it's gonna be a really good program. And I hope it's well intended, that's April 21st. Everyone, and, and we fit the, the bike helmets to the kids, make sure the brakes are adjusted right and, and the seats and all that. So, Sign Monahan and Tom Soulier both donated money, were, were trying to get some outside exercise equipment in our park next door. The total cost is gonna be around $40,000. And kudos to them, they think it's a good project. I'm still trying to get two more grants, one from the community foundation and one from the reels, the National Real Estate Association. They, they're big supporters of this, putting these outside exercise equipment centers all in parks. Because, you know what, it helps property values, they say.
Absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm still working on that, and then once that's going to go, we'll be ready to rock and roll on that. And Phillips Sign, remember we mentioned, someone mentioned about muskrat signs? So, this is how this went down. I got a quote, I called up Phillips Signs and asked him for a quote for four muskrats, or, yeah, four muskrat signs, like our turtle signs, just to get a quote. And he gave me a quote for four. And then I got a message from, yeah, Stephanie from Phillips Signs, Ed the owner, you know, he lives in the township and he drives by there every day. He said, hey, Ed called, and he says, you're getting six signs for free. So actually, the donation, this is $578 for four, so it's another half, so probably like 700.
Thanks.
You know, close to 800. So he's doing it for free, he says that when they're done, we'll be ready to pick them up. I'm thinking we need to get a couple of these by the high school for muskrat crossing. Just saying. So I don't know if you can see, it's a little sign with a muskrat, says muskrat crossing. So, anyhow, that's what those are about. We have motion and support, do we?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the, of the township approving the donations as motioned, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. And we are gonna have a, I'm told, a couple more next week, or next meeting. I think that's great.
That's fun stuff.
I mean, our community's coming out, so...
You bet.
Two, item two is Parks and Re, helmet purchase for the said, the helmets for the bike safety program.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Parks and Rec Department helmet purchase in the amount of $2,142 deriving from line item 208-961.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any discussion? Uh, it comes out to about, what, 350? No, actually, I can do the math, 180, 280, just under, yeah, it's about 350 helmets, so...
Awesome.
Yeah.
Various colors.
Various colors.
It says, it says 360 on the invoice.
360, I'm sorry, 360 helmets.
And again, the program is driven for, primarily for the kids?
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
And like I say, we're gonna have, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a good program, so. Got a lot of support for it, I think we still, I think we have about 14 volunteers signed up for it, we're looking for about seven more, so. Uh, we do have motion and support. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of purchasing the bike helmets for 2142, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Not aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. I know it. Okay, next we have our Parks and Rec stage rental for music in the park.
I will make a motion to approve the stage rental in the amount of $1,200 from line 208-961.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? The cost did go up 10 bucks, or was it 20? $10 a week from last time, it's a good deal. And we couldn't build a band stage for this. Over 40 years, we couldn't, it would, it would still cost us more. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of $1,200 for the stage rental for Parks and Rec, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next we have water plant purchase, online turbidity meters. And what this is, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but turbidity is basically how much dirt is floating around in your water. Like after it rains and the river's brown with mud, high turbidity. And the DEQ told the water plant that we are requiring you, back up, we have four banks of microfilters in the, in the water department. And they are requiring us one turbidity monitor on every bank of filters. So we have four of them. And it's a little over $20,000 in the contract that we have with Elgin Lake Water Department. If they have to spend anything over $20,000, that they have to get our approval. And that's what we're seeking today. Our, our cost is, I gotta check the contract, I believe it's 62%, it could be 66%. I gotta double check the contract. It's 62 for capital. Yeah, that's what I thought, 62%. So actually, it would be $12,688.30. I would entertain a motion that whatever our share is per the contract, but I'm almost positive it's 62%.
60, 62% of 12,000?
Yeah.
No.
No.
That is our 62%.
That is our 62%.
Yeah, 20,465.
Okay. So, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the online turbidity meters. There's four of them at the amount of $12,688.30?
Yes. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say, oh, roll call.
Artie Brison.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shurkey.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa, yes. Trish Oregan.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next we have fire department new hire, Cory May. Chief, you wanna get up and maybe introduce Cory?
That's it? Mike started laughing at me. Requesting permission from the township board to hire Cory May to the Clay Township Fire Department. Cory comes fully, fully trained, fire trained. He served with the St. Clair Fire Department, the Marine City Fire Department. He was also an employee of the Gross Point Woods Fire Division. Cory also is presently works for Tri-Hospital, he is a paramedic with them. He's been in the area for quite a bit, for a long time. He's been on the fire service since 1991. And he's also has met tech for the county.
Cool.
Where, where you been?
Semi-retired.
He's here now.
That's good.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Cory or Chief?
He's a resident of Marine City, so he's not that far from our township.
We won't hold that against him.
Thank you.
Right, Trish.
His certifications did constitute half of our board packet.
Actually.
That being said, I will make a recommendation to hire Cory May to our fire department. Highly qualified.
As a motion?
Support.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any more discussion? Any questions, while we got Cory on the hot seat? Okay. All right, hearing no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, next, fire department, approval of department officers.
Mr. Supervisor, can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item number six until we have a, a better opportunity to review.
Okay, have a motion to postpone?
I'll support.
Six with support. And what we're gonna do too is, you know, have, have a few more, better interviews with the candidates and, and put it on the next meeting, along with our mission goals and vision statements.
That would be terrific.
Okay. We have motion, we have support, okay, any more discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next on the agenda, number seven, police department firearms training, 3,900. Mike, take it away.
Okay, well, each year we do firearms training, use of force training twice a year. Out of that, one of those is a mandated by MCOs, that we have to shoot the MCOs course. That is gonna be incorporated with this one. What we're also incorporating with this one is a use of force training, which is gonna be simulated training, which I'm sure you've probably seen on TV. And this is a room that's set up just for this training, and it's got the screens that are all the way around you. They can do multiple scenario after scenario that, that runs the officer through the use of force and what level of forces that they use. With that being said, it could be a matter of it just being something from verbal commands to rectify the situation, down to using their sidearm, to using pepper spray, to using taser, to using control techniques, anything that they would have to use to get compliance. With this comes with making sure the officer follows what they call the use of force continuum, which is mandated through, mandated training through MCOs as well. I think it's pretty much a priceless training, and they, they've given us, given us a pretty good deal on this. Comes out to be, for the both of them, having a live fire range dedicated just to us, having the training room for the Milo training dedicated just to us, we're paying $130 an hour. With that, we're incorporating three 10-hour days to get everybody through, that includes all of our officers, as well as our reserve officers through this. So, it, it's gonna be a pretty good course coming through, and I, I'd like to place the invite to any of you that'd like to come down, let me know, and come on down with me and take a look at it. I think you'd be really impressed with what they've got going on down there. This new system is really nice. And this is something that, I know I'm speaking with risk management or insurance carriers and that, this is something they really want to see as well, is more of a hands-on when it comes to use of force training. So, that's what we're trying to do here, and trying to raise the bar a little bit and get our guys as much training as possible, so, just one more step towards that.
So Chief and Mike, clear, and I understood you correctly, your entire command staff, all of your officers, both full-time and your reserve officers?
Correct.
All have to go through this training?
Everybody.
Thank you.
During this training, do you get into fusing a situation, or is that different?
Nope, that's all part of this.
Is it?
Yep, and like I say, this could go from, everything from just using verbal commands all the way to deadly force.
Okay.
And they've got just multiple scenarios that they can change it up at any time. And what's good is, there's instructors that are in there, along with ours, that you're gonna read the, the officer's body, watch what they're doing, and they can kinda throw the scenarios in there as it goes. And, you know, just no different than it's gonna be on the street, you don't know what's gonna be thrown at you, and it's the same thing that you're getting here. So, it kinda amps it up a little bit for the guys.
Very nice, sounds good.
Where's this range at?
McComb Police Academy, which is, it's, it's just fantastic. They've got a really nice setup here.
We have to spend 10 hours with you if I decided to go?
What's that?
Have to spend 10 hours with you if I decided to go?
Not the whole 10, I won't do that to you. The good thing is, I found out that one of our firearms instructors won't be able to be there the last day, and Sergeant Stockwell's loving the fact that I'm gonna break the dust off and get back in my firearm instructor stuff, and I'm gonna go out there and have some fun with him, so, the guys are just loving it.
Awesome, awesome, I would.
Don't shoot anybody, that's a good guy.
No, can't afford that.
That's right.
You want to borrow my 450 Bushmaster?
There you go.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion?
Thank you.
That we approve the police department's firearm training in the amount of $3,900 deriving from line item 207-960.01.
Support.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next we have a higher, new full-time patrolman, Michael Halverson. Did I say it right, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Are you Mike, do we call you Mike or Michael?
Doesn't matter, sir.
Okay, well...
Officer, officer.
Officer. Officer. And if you pull on any of us over, it's yes, sir. So, uh, yeah, anyone have, go ahead, Mike?
Well, Mike comes to us, he is currently employed with the city of Detroit as a police officer, so obviously, you know, he's gonna have to amp it up a little bit coming out here. We've already warned him of that. He's got 20 years in with the city of Detroit. He comes highly recommended, I, I can't, I can't say enough about the background investigation and, and how well-liked he is down there by, by his peers, his command staff, everybody. And he's just at a point in his career that he's looking, he wants to make a change and kinda do something different. So I think we're gonna be lucky enough to get him here. It just, it, it's nice to see that we're able to get some talent like this and someone that's got some very good real-world experience, so. And I think, you know, he's gonna see a whole different aspect of the police work as well out here. You know, things are definitely a lot different, but I think it's gonna be, be a lot of fun for, for everybody. He is related to Sergeant Stockwell, that's, that's the only thing that I had to get past, but other than that, we're okay. We just have a couple things to finish up, that's gonna be finished up on the background tomorrow, which I don't see any problem whatsoever. I, I was hoping to have this all done before the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, one part of it, I, I wasn't because of scheduling problem on the other side, but this will all be wrapped up tomorrow, so I'm looking for the board's approval to bring Mike on board as soon as possible.
We could, we could do a, a motion pending, 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 finish the background check.
I will make a motion to appoint our full-time new hire, Michael Halverson, did I say that right? Pending the final background investigation.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. And to reiterate, this is to backfill the position from our resource officer that we put into the school. So that's, you know, that's...
Would you like to take the podium?
Would you like to take the podium for a minute?
Sure.
All right. I'm Trustee O'Regan, Chris O'Regan. Why don't you, why don't you just take a minute and tell us a little bit about yourself, and I'm interested in your strengths.
I grew up in a small town called Mayo, way up north.
Oh, yeah.
And I lived up there until I got in the Detroit Police Department in nineteen ninety-seven. Then I had to move down to Detroit. We had, they had residency at the time. And then I currently live in St. Clair Shores. I have one son and a wife.
What precincts did you work in?
I started off at number five until they tore it down in oh-five, I believe. And then they moved us up to number nine, which was called Eastern District. And then they separated us a couple years ago, and now we're back, I stayed at nine.
Okay, so you went back to the precinct mode instead of the-
The district, yes.
Yeah, district, okay.
Yeah, that was a flop.
Yeah, fortunately. Good.
What brought you to Clay Township?
I have a lot of family up this way, and so I'm looking to relocate out of the city, back up this way.
Very nice.
So if you do that MCOS training, don't shoot your cousin.
I never shot anyone. Too bad my son beat him.
Oh, this is, this could be fun. Might be a little wager placed on score. Is this a scoreable? Is the MCOS test scoreable?
Well, you know, the nice thing is, one of the things I told the guys, because we're gonna have a little bit of time here, I wanna try to make it a little interesting, and they're gonna do some top-down competitions along with this, so it's something I used to do when I was on the range, running back in the day, and the guys really had a lot of fun with it, and it made things a little more interesting, and then we threw something in there, somebody'd get at the end of it.
Very good. A little bragging rights.
Yeah, you know, and it livenes it up a little bit. Everybody has a lot of fun with it, so.
Good for morale.
Absolutely.
Very good.
I don't think I need to point out, Chief, but I'm assuming that our officer Helverson would not be reporting under Sergeant Stockwell.
As far as that goes, it's not gonna make a difference either way. You see this all the time, as far as police work goes. If there was any kind of conflict, that's where we step in, but I don't see that being an issue whatsoever.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of hiring soon-to-be Officer Michael Helverson to full-time stay as the Clay Township Police, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations, Michael.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yep, glad to have you. All right, next we have Resolution twenty-eighteen eleven, request for federal and state bridge replacement funds for Flamingo. This is, we did this three years ago. Everyone knows Flamingo Bridge needs to be replaced, and to do that, in fact, you can see the estimate, I don't have it in front of me, yes, the estimate on this bridge is one million, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred. And this will allow us to go seek federal, state, and county funds to make this project happen. And, and like I say, once all this gets done, our estimated township share is about seventeen thousand, so it behooves us to do this, and allows me to work with our county road to go after these funds. We're, we're thinking it probably won't get funded this next coming year, but the following year it should be. We have a list of bridges, and how it works for the federal government, they don't, they only allow you to apply for five countywide. And so you wanna make sure those, the ones that you apply for actually get filled. And in the pecking order, we have two that's going in on Anchor Bay Drive. It'll probably be the following year in the pecking order.
As in twenty-twenty?
Twenty-twenty. To get funded. But this will allow us to even continue if twenty-twenty-one, something, something happens, if there's a major fall-through, something on a couple of bridges. It could sneak in there this nineteen, but I'm doubting it, it'll probably be twenty. So, that being said, I'd like to, the board, to consider passing this resolution.
Make a resolution to, or resolution, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen eleven, request for federal and state bridge replacement funds for Flamingo Bridge.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Kristy's not here. Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have Resolution twenty-eighteen twelve, the conveyance of bottom lands. And we get, how many of these, Bart, once a year? Yeah, three or four. But this is, in the township, we have a lot of deeded land from the state, and if anyone wants to build a seawall, or take ownership or possession of it, they actually have to buy it from the state. And for them to even make the application, to, to apply, is part of the application to apply to the state to take ownership of bottom lands, they, they need a resolution from our board allowing them to do that, and that's what this is. So I think we're the only one in the county that has to deal with this, aren't we? We're the only, we are the only township in the state that has, has deeded, yeah, leased property from the, that the DNR, the state owns, so, yeah. Right, yeah, leave it to us. So, this is a resolution to allow the applicant, to apply to, for conveyance of St. Clair bottom lands.
I should probably know this, but I don't know the definition of a bottom land. Can one of you ladies help me with the terminology?
The bottom. The St. Clair was actually, and some of the other areas were actually deeded, and they went out and measured it. At one point in time, there was land there.
Okay.
But it's not, it's actually water, bottom land.
A lot goes out of- A lot still goes out over the water. So it encompasses that portion as well.
But if the water is over on top of it, the state deems, hey, we own it. They own the bottom lands.
And in this system, someone had filled in over the years, and it didn't meet the correct size of the deed, and so now he's trying to get the portion that was filled in.
I gotcha. Thanks for the explanation.
And the water was a lot lower, too.
Yeah, it's high right now, isn't it? Oh, boy.
That being said, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-eighteen dash twelve, the conveyance of bottom land.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution twenty-eighteen thirteen, Colony Drive Waterline Special Assessment, four and five water supply distribution system, approval of. And what this is going to do is set up a special assessment district, well, we actually already did that, but go ahead with the assessment, so we can go forward with the project.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash thirteen, Colony Drive Waterline Special Assessment, Resolution number four of five water supply distribution system, Colony Drive, Clay Township, Michigan.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. And just to reiterate, these costs are estimated, once we go out for bonding, and we'll have hard numbers. I'd like to also mention, too, it's with other special assessments in the past with water districts, which we, township's done, actually, the island almost twenty years ago, and what would happen, when you buy a bond, say a twenty-year bond, you're locked into that bond for the full twenty years, you cannot pay it off early. So if we sell the bond for three percent, whatever we get, two and a half, three percent, we are, we don't have the option of paying it off early and getting out of paying that three percent off. So what has happened in the past, a lot of people, they wouldn't wanna pay the interest, so they paid the whole thing off early. So what happens is the township doesn't collect that three, whatever it is, four-point-five, is it? Percent interest on recouping to the special assessment, you know, they paid off early, but we're still paying the three percent on, over twenty years. And so they get underwater. And I got a sneaky suspicion on this special assessment, a lot of people are gonna pay it off early the first year. So if we go out and get a bond for the full price, a third of the people pay it off early, we're gonna be stuck paying interest and not collecting the interest payments, people, everyone follow me, for that twenty years. So I've been getting kinda creative with the bonding agent, and I think what we're gonna do is sell, buy a one-year bond from a local bank for the million dollars or whatever it turns out to be, and, and roll it over in a year. So one year, we'll have a lot better idea of how many people are actually paying off early. Say if, you know, we get three hundred thousand dollars paid off early, we won't have to carry that interest in the-
Just roll the seven over?
Yeah.
Paying interest on the seven?
Right.
Seven million.
Exactly. So the first year, I'm looking at doing a bond, a one-year bond, if you will, or a loan for the project, and then rebonding it, a nineteen-year bond in year two.
And the interest rates from a one-year bond compared to a nineteen-year bond, that's not gonna turn us over?
It'll be, no, no, it shouldn't. We'll, we'll know what we're gonna pay interest in a one-year, and we'll actually, the, right now, I think they're, well, they've changed, I shouldn't, I'm guessing it's about three percent for a twenty-year bond, nineteen, twenty-year bond. So interest rates have been going up a little bit.
What would you guess in a one-year?
I'm not sure, whatever the prime is, I'm not sure. But we'll, I'll have the definitive numbers for that, you know, hard numbers in May, probably, but I just wanted to tell you, we're checking into that.
Something we can talk about as a board again?
Yep, definitely. Just-
When they brought it to the island, a lot of people paid it off, too.
Yeah, we were underwater, underwater, more ways than one. Yeah, we were underwater for about seven hundred thousand on the whole project over there, 'cause there was bad assumptions, you know. The assumption was a lot more people were gonna tie into it, that didn't happen, and there was assumption that, you know, we're gonna be collecting all this interest, and a lot of people paid it off early. And so what we did, we were able to, to refinance that bond from like a five, we're paying about five percent, six percent, and we sold it actually for one point eight seven percent, which was very, very good, and kinda saved our butt over there, so. Because otherwise, that would've been underfunded, and I say the Iowa project, and along with that, was the backroads in the mainland, too. It was a big project. I think total seven million, was it, John? That project was, so. So, that being said, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, do we? I'm sorry, I'm rambling on. Any more discussion?
You all set?
I'm all set, thank you. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Sandy Kufel?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Ernie Bryson?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine? Yes. Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Right, essence of new business, board member comments. Cindy.
Well, first I'd like to apologize to our fire chief. I know he was looking forward to getting his command staff, and now has to wait a couple more weeks, but I'm sure that you'll get by in the next couple of weeks, and all will be well. I wanna congratulations to the fire department and the DPW for their ISO rating. I think that's pretty fantastic. Hope to see it come down a little bit more when we get that water line in over on Colony. And I would like to welcome Officer Helverson to our department. Best wishes.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I'm glad to see all the departments moving forward with the personnel, quality personnel they may add as well, so kudos there. Planning Commission, we did some rezoning, public hearing and that, so that should be coming for the board before too long. And that's about it.
Go ahead.
I went with three people from the zoning board of appeals to three different workshops, and we all learned something, which was very good, and so we were busy running around to different places to go to those workshops, and I too wanna repeat what Cindy said, congratulations to Chief Rosen, Supervisor DeBoyer for the ISO ratings that got lowered, and also welcome to our new full-time police officer, Officer Helverson.
Also Cory May with her fair department. But he snuck out on us, so, you know, out of sight, out of mind, my apologies.
Thank you. Sandy?
Well, I wanted to let the parents of some young kids know that April fourteenth and April twenty-first, the Elginak Youth Football League will be accepting registrations for the fall season for football and cheer, and it will be at the high school from nine to one. And with that, the Elginak Little League for baseball and softball will also, on those same days, be holding field cleanup, and anyone that would like to come out and help is more than welcome. And putting that aside, I'm excited for our new hires in the fire department and the police department.
Chris?
Well, congratulations to the M Parks volunteer, the yearning my friend, Joanne Shirkey. It's quite an honor.
Yes.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, pleased that the police department was able to backfill, and we won't have a resource shortage, so thank you, Officer Michael Helverson. And thanks to Chief for bringing in Cory May. Excited about him. And I guess my last two words are, go Blue.
No, that's, that's okay. That's okay. Yes, also, regards to Ms. Officer Helverson, and paramedic Cory May. I've mentioned Cory a few times out in public, he's a good guy, so he's gonna fit in good, and I'm excited for the fire department, well, I mean, getting our ISO lowered, I mean, that's huge. That will eventually save everybody in the township money on their house insurance. You won't notice it so much if you already have it existing, but if you buy a new house and you look at it for the first time, it will definitely save a few bucks there. So, and the way I look at it, that comes off of people's mortgage, you know. So, you know, that's a good thing. And I'd just like to mention, man, there's a lot of positive things going on in our community, you know, I mean, how many communities can say, here, township, I'm giving you money just for these programs and everything, and these aren't sponsorships, advertising, these are, you know what, we really like what you're doing, here's some of my hard-earned money for you. And I think we're actually going to have someone volunteer to pay for the stage rental, both on our park and Elginak Park.
Huh.
What?
Be nice.
Yeah. I got a verbal, I didn't get committed yet, and I don't have the check yet, so, that's just huge, you know, 'cause, you know, they like what we're doing, so.
Love the park.
Yeah. And we are getting quotes on the park, too, for new bathroom- And we are getting quotes on the park, too, for new bathroom partitions. Their old steel ones are kinda rusted out, we're gonna put some stainless steel ones in there, we're getting quotes. And I actually put a phone call in today for the Health Department to get our certification for food service in there, we got all the equipment in and walked through, I gotta get that going, and so we'll be able to rock and roll on that. And it's just a lot of positive stuff going on, and I'll, I will say it, it's hard, but I will say it, go Blue.
Can I just say one more thing? Is thank you to you, Ernie, for all the work that you put in with that park and all the stuff, and the grants, and to Cindy Babish, just, we have so much going on with recreation, and it's really a good thing, yeah.
I don't think two years ago, M-Parks knew where Clay Township was. And now we got the Volunteer of the Year.
Thanks to Cindy, really, she was-
So, thanks to you, Joanne. That being said, one more motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thanks for coming, everybody.